We have a motion and a second. Any question on those? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is a resolution to approve the bill list, which is part of the package.
I have a motion to approve the bill list.
We have a motion and a second. Any question on the bill list? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communication and comments from members of the public.
No one signed up.
We signed up. Moving on. Superintendent's report for Lawrence.
In the past few years, we've had Adam and Greg and Donna and Sue each report out their department bills separately. And this year, we talked about, there's so much overlap that they work as such a team, being our three directors of the academic side of the house and our principal, that we thought we'd combine their reports into one. So they're going to take turns sharing what we're calling our school goals, but it really covers all of those different realms of Arrowhead and their departments. So you know where we're headed this year. And I think Sue is starting off.
I'm starting first. Hi, everybody. To start with today, let's do that. We have our Arrowhead High School mission and vision, and the work that the team is engaged in is, of course, aligned with that new adopted vision from the focus plan last year and mission. As we, and you guys obviously know what it says, "Arrowhead will be an educational leader in creating pathways for students to embrace the opportunities for tomorrow." Up tomorrow is our vision. Mission: Empowers students to be engaged, confident, continuous learners who utilize the essential skills to collaborate and contribute within the local and global community. So I'm going to talk first a little bit about the teaching and learning goals for this year, which are aligned to that mission and vision. First and foremost this year, we have continuous improvement in academic and career exploration. This is our fourth year with a school curriculum associated with academic career exploration. Our goal this year is to increase awareness of post-secondary opportunities and increase student confidence with the planning and the plans that they pull together for post-secondary, and to continue to improve the lessons in terms of engagement for the students that are in, conducted in homerooms. Exploring, first ways we're going to kind of address that is by exploring how employability skills are taught and assessed throughout the school program, and considering the approaches to more directly provide students with feedback, and hopefully increasing their post-secondary competence in their plans and success. And Greg's going to talk a little bit about that associated with the SLO, the School Learning Objective. We're also exploring approaches to how academic and career exploration can be further embedded in the, you know, already developed school curriculum and program. There are a lot of teachers that have embraced and see that drawing the connections within the classroom is important. For example, in our science nine classes, all our science nine students, they do a career research project associated with careers in science. So again, the idea is to see the connectivity among what they are learning to what they possibly might study after high school. And we're continuing to build relationships with businesses and organizational partners to increase students' opportunity to explore shadow and other career-based learning experiences. Brenda King, who is our career and technical education program lead, has taken extraordinary lead to make sure that we have processes in place here at Arrowhead High School that make it easier or more fluid to get those experiences, to make sure that we have an internal process to excuse students from school to have those job experiences. And what we're doing is we're utilizing that process to collect data of both students that are doing this kind of work associated with classes that they're in, that are asking them to do jobs, shadows, or connect with businesses or organizations. But students actually can go out and do this on their own and can conduct their own job shadow experience. For example, we had a student, Brenda was telling me about, who was connected with somebody in nursing and wanted to shadow them for the day, and they were able to set that up. And it's similar to how, in terms of a process and how we do college visits. Those are excused visits for the day, and we want students to be able to go have those kind of experiences. So we're hoping to continue to kind of monitor how many students are participating in those kind of activities, and every year, we're going to try to increase how many students are able to get out of the building and experience with those opportunities. The second goal, and really associated with the TLT, which is the Teaching and Learning Team, is really associated with continuing the work that started last year with the focus plan, and really bringing the focus plan to life. We have four goals associated, four goals that were developed, enduring goals as part of the focus plan. And the Teaching and Learning Team is really focused on, right now, on the first two goals, which are connected to, you know, creating and nurturing environment, a learning environment here at Arrowhead, and of course, making sure that students have a plethora of pathways and learning opportunities that are going to prepare them for post-secondary success. Teaching and Learning Team has spent a great deal of time this fall already developing a process by which we are gathering a lot of feedback from our teaching faculty in regard to what are the things associated with those goals that we should be really excited about, that we should continue to celebrate as a school, that, you know, that that's work that should continue? And are there one or two things that, as you think about that goal over the course of the next few years, may be something that we need to investigate, study, learn, spend a little bit more time on, because it's viewed by our teaching faculty as maybe a gap that we haven't been addressing the last few years? So right now, we're in the process of kind of gathering all that feedback, summarizing the feedback, and being able to, hopefully by the, some point in second semester, be able to say, okay, here's the direction for the next few years associated with these goals. So Teaching and Learning Team has been part of really building that process. We need to engage, continue to engage the entire staff and get continued feedback about those priorities. The third goal there, Teaching and Learning Team is also really focused on is leadership skills and communication. Our team of 14 has been very considerate of the fact that school culture is really important to the learning process, and the constant feedback to our teaching staff in terms of effective teaching practices, and kind of keeping the lines of communication open in terms of not only what are we doing in the classroom, but what are we doing as an organization that's continuing to grow our students? So we talk about our roles as leaders in that entire process, and how to build our leadership skills, to make sure that we are building kind of a uniform understanding or a kind of collective understanding of the direction that we should be moving in. A lot of that has to do with the way that we're communicating with staff and students and parents about the learning experiences at Arrowhead. So we spend a good deal of TLT, Teaching and Learning Team, time talking about how things are rolling out, major initiatives, what are the concerns of staff, bringing that back, what are some other things we should be considering, what's some feedback we're getting back from students in terms of learning experiences and program development, how should we be communicating forward about some of the initiatives that are, that we're talking about in terms of our school goals? So we believe that tie between leadership and communication with, in particular, staff, but students and parents as well is really important. So we're consistently looking at resources and talking about strategies and thinking about all the considerations to make that, to make that happen, because it does impact our school culture and how people feel in terms of the satisfaction of their work and how they're learning. You'll see there too, in terms of, a major part of what the Teaching and Learning Goals are associated with is us ongoing curriculum development, ongoing curriculum revision, and course development. I think this is an important part to kind of focus on, and because we're going to be spending some time later with the Curriculum Committee Report with three new courses, I kind of want to give some background to the curriculum review process, because it's probably, in my view, and in my role as the Director of Learning, it's what I like to do the most, I guess, is what I'm passionate about, is people bring ideas forward, and we're able to see some of those ideas come to fruition. It's very satisfying. Talk about like the global experience, that is, it's third year this year, and you heard from those global students. It was an emotional meeting, if you recall, in the spring, where we were, I think we're all blubbering, because we're so satisfied with the good work that our kids are doing. Seeing those processes through, working with our staff as a team, it's really important. So that's a big pleasure that I have associated with my role. But part of that, we have to recognize, some school districts take a look at curriculum every five years, or every six years, or every eight years, they have a cycle. Here at Arrowhead, we operate a little bit differently in the sense that our program leads and our departments are reviewing curriculum or courses within a curriculum every year, all the time. It's very fluid. And so sometimes, as our program leads and our teachers collaborate around curriculum changes, that might mean tweaks, assessment changes, some changes in scope and sequence. But the collaboration in the building of our school curriculum, although some of those changes can sometimes be very small, what we're going to highlight, what we are going to try to highlight later this evening is, when that collaboration brings new ideas forward, how we continue to support those new ideas is, I think, really important. So you're going to hear from me in a little bit, you can hear my voice a lot today, the two proposals out of the Business and Marketing Department, and a proposal coming out of Technology and Engineering for the Warhawk Manufacturing, and there'll be one other course proposal that's been developed cross-departmentally, Leadership and Curriculum, Leadership and Character Ed class that we'll be proposing next month called the Leaders Mindset. When we think about, and this question, I think maybe we've talked about before, but I think this team, program leaders and teachers, when we look at course development and curriculum revision, we're looking at, are there new standards that have been developed by the state of Wisconsin? Are there labor trends we need to be looking at, or student interests that have changed, or gaps in our curriculum as we kind of analyze what kind of changes we're bringing forward? So I think, I know the Curriculum Committee is always like, wow, you know, there's always so much change. But when you don't have, like, Social Studies looks at their curriculum every eight years, and World Language looks at their curriculum, you know, on these cycles, it may seem like we have a lot of change, some of them may be smaller, some yield new course opportunities. So I think that background is important to recognize, and recognizing too, that it doesn't happen quickly, it's a two-year and sometimes three-year process to bring a course proposal forward, but annually, there might be minor changes to curriculum. So that's, every year, probably always going to be on Teaching and Learning Goals, but I think those experiences that we're providing our students in terms of learning opportunities are always really important to highlight annually, because that, I think, really is a strength of our staff, and a strength of a lot of our programs, is that we're always looking at what students want to be taking, and what they're interested in learning, and where we need to be guiding them down the road. And the last goal, because I've talked more than I said I already would, sorry. Donna Smith and I have the opportunity to work really closely together with the Professional Learning Team. She takes lead with that team, so I'm not going to steal her thunder, but we work together. And this year, we're really focused on thinking a little bit differently, or maybe considering, we're investigating how professional learning might look different in the future at Arrowhead. Part of the impetus for why we want to look at this, we have very, really, a lot of great professional learning opportunities for our staff in the small amount of time that we've set aside for professional learning. We offer a summer learning academy, which is totally voluntary, but we have 30 teachers who participate or so. We have professional learning that takes place as part of professional collaboration time, which happens every Wednesday weekly. Some of that's professional learning, some of that's other types of collaboration. And then we have an August Day, October Day, and a January Day, where we really can bring staff together for professional learning. The continuity of our professional learning throughout the year, the personalization associated with professional learning, we just want to investigate, are we keeping up with the latest trends associated with what's happening with adult learning in education and even elsewhere, taking a look at the way adults learn best? And so that team, after, now that we had our 2018 Growth Summit in October, which takes up a good portion of our fall planning time, now our team is really going to turn our attention to looking at periodicals, taking a look at some things like from ASCD and Learning Forward and other, and other research that's out there, and gathering some information from our own staff about what might be, some steps we could be taking to build some of that continuous learning, which staff have told us isn't always there. It can be. We've got some good systems in place and some good framework in place, but we'd like to make sure we're getting even better. In addition to why that is an important goal for this year, I think is recognizing that in July of 2018, with the state license changes that took place out of DPI, where teachers no longer, their lifetime license, they don't have to go to get credits to renew their license, professional learning falls on the district, the district's responsibility. So we want to make sure we're providing the opportunities and needs that are really going to help our staff, and ultimately, of course, help our students grow and continue to achieve at higher and higher levels. So that is quick, and I didn't say everything I wanted to even, but I will take questions at the end, I think, so everybody's got a chance to chime in, because we'll overlap, I think, some of our roles. What's next? Donna?
Okay. I am doing the library media and tech goals. So our first goal is library media focused, and so it's encouraging lifelong learners. So we want to be able to support teachers in choice reading as a part of their curriculum, and we've seen an increase of that this year. Liz Monkwitz now is holding lit lunches once a month to introduce students to new books so that they can make a good choice in their, in their piece of literature that they choose to read. And that's promoted heavily through the Language Arts Department. She has announcements, and on the announcement slides, and she's working with the book club led by Beth Sheweth to get them involved to also promote reading within the library. All library staff, library aides and tech integrators, both campuses, through a coordinated effort, are promoting books through different book displays and announcements. So Cindy Musbox suggested that we use current equipment. We're lucky enough to have like a marketing major as a library aide. So she suggested using this current equipment, TVs on carts, to promote the library. So staff will be contributing, all my staff will be contributing to a presentation that will be part of this electronic display at both campuses. I'm lucky enough to have very creative and thoughtful staff, so Cindy and Therese Rodiger at North Campus, and Andrea Dahlman and Suborowski at South are all working coordinating and sharing their display ideas with one another. We're doing shelf talkers, so staff recommended books, much like you'd see in Barnes and Noble or any of the other bookstores. So we want to show our students that our staff read as well. And we would love to have school board member recommendations as well, so if you'd like to contribute to those, watch for the email. We're going to have themed and timely displays, and we're also working on measuring the effectiveness of those displays, so not just putting a bunch of books up, but checking those out to display, and then making sure that we're recording those to see if, in fact, students are grabbing those books when they see them out. Monthly smaller book orders, so rather than two or three giant book orders every year, we're doing monthly smaller ones to keep our collection fresh. And then, of course, we have our overdrive books, which are E and, are E and audio books. So we're going to be promoting that as, as the holiday season approaches, people are traveling, and they may want to listen to a book in their travels or read it on their phone. These are requests and usually just high-interest books, but we do have a professional collection as well. And then the next goal is facilitating the Tech Advisory Committee. A lot of our curricular and classroom focus will come from this, because teachers and students serve on this committee. So we are working on pulling our plan together, aligning with the focus plan, and they will be taking place, they'll be taking place with some professional learning as well. So we're providing professional learning support for educational technology. So for teachers, and specifically the Tech Advisory and the Tech Integrators, we're going to work on digital citizenship. Technology integrators have worked with all freshman science classes on digital citizenship, and then they work with the health classes on social media and internet safety, so all freshmen get this through the health classes then. They want to be able to expand on ideas for both of those training and be able to better differentiate between those, because digital citizenship is the bigger umbrella that social media falls underneath. So they want to be able to expand on the idea that the digital citizenship is going to be talking more about copyright, responsible use, research, and that sort of thing. We also want to be able to improve our annual training for our staff, which includes student information, privacy, and online security, which is going to fall under that umbrella as well. Our technology integrators provide much of this technology support for professional learning through their integrations, their consultations, they do PCT once a month. And they're moving this year beyond just doing Canvas, so they're integrating new ideas and new tools. Jen Charles is looking at NearPod right now, so, which is a free tool that supports student engagement and formative assessment. So there's always new tools popping up, and the teachers get very excited about it. They had over 30 people at their last PCT, which was really great. We're also looking at feedback from our staff, so our staff had requested Epson and Smart Support. So we're pursuing how we can approach that support for the equipment so that the teachers are using it effectively into its fullest. For students, we do Wings training. Nate Trader, our IT Operations Specialist, is working with the Tech Integrators on recruiting and training student tech leaders. And then we have our Essential Technology for Arrowhead course within Canvas that we introduce our freshmen to at Wings. For parents, we do Wings, and then I'm hoping to be able to do a session in parent-teacher conferences, and those involve becoming a Canvas observer, and then the Essential Technology at Arrowhead. And our next goal is data. So our data is led by Sue Gatto, and one of the first goals is connecting Skyward to other systems. So far, we have Canvas connected to our Skyward system, but we had a request to also pull in summer school for that, so that they can upload those grades more easily. So Sue is working on that right now. We have Skyward connected to Achieve, to our Edit, which is our data warehouse, and then also to our food service, which we sometimes forget that's technology, but we need to update the Citrix client to web-based client so that we can get all those updates right away. And then reporting out from Skyward, Sue would really like to train others on Wise Data, so that they're using all that data that we upload effectively. And then she's working closely with Sue Casetta and Brenda King on the CTE Reporting Focus this year. So she was instrumental in pulling that team together and getting us all on the same page when we're reporting that data. And also, along with data, we're collecting educational technology data, so our Speak Up survey will be November 28th, I believe, and then that is open until January 31st, so you have a lot of time to do it, but you can start at any time, because it's open now. They shortened the survey a bit, so, and it'll be linked to the front of the website. We also use the Horizon Report, which is a national report. And then just through our observations and feedback from staff, through our Growth Summit, we get a lot of feedback, so we use that in order to shape things for the next year. And then, of course, our Technology Advisory Committee brings a lot of information to that, to that team. And our last goal is to promote a robust and effective network, which Jeff Waters leads. So what he's working on is coordinating the logins. This year, we reset freshman passwords after summer school, which resulted in very few password resets. I think the year before, Jeff said he reset 400 passwords. So this year, it was just a handful, and that's amazing. So we're going to keep on that, make sure we communicate that clearly, so everybody understands that that's what's going on, and then continue with that, with that focus, because it seems to be working. He also wants to document the processes, so that as a student enters, we get them within all of our systems more quickly, and as they exit, we also do the same. Our wireless, we are changing our public Wi-Fi to include a password for security purposes, so we're getting the communication out on that. And we're working really hard on easier guest access to our network throughout the day. For infrastructure, continue upgrading equipment and updating software and firmware as needed. And then we need to monitor all our new systems. So we have Windows 10 that's new this year, we have a new internet service provider, and then new equipment, so making sure that we're monitoring that and monitoring that progress, and using those tools to make things easier. So Windows 10 can be used to create some efficiencies for our teacher laptops as we're re-imaging them, so trying to figure out how we can better push those images out rather than having to touch every laptop every time to update things. So those are a few of the things we are working on in the library media tech area.
All right. Student Services goals. First of all, I can't believe how much the Student Services staff is open and willing to make their lives harder, to make like the lives of the kids they serve better. And a lot of stuff that they do and want to do is to make their job and their work more efficient, but that comes with a huge taxation on their lives in the current time as they shift like mental models, the way that they work, and they have to learn and integrate new things, while sometimes even staying with the old system they use. So the folks at Student Services really deserve a lot of gratitude for the work that they're willing to put in. And this year was really exceptional with the stuff that they came to me with and said, we want to do this this year. I said, well, it seems like a lot of work. And then, you know, my job has been to help them manage through it and take on some more of those administrative roles. We had a good chuckle last spring in our department. Mary Ann Beckman started the work of generally like the goals that you see up there back in 2012, 2013, and I presented to them like what we were working on and talking about in 2012, 2013. And it was kind of like, can you believe like the simple stuff that like we were talking about that's really ingrained now? And the things that we're talking about now compared to then just seem so advanced, and you know, we've come a long way in the six or seven years it's been since, since Mary Ann brought this line of thinking to our department. So within a lot of these symbols, we've had the activities that get towards these goals change over time. Self-led IEP, so one of our big ones is the increase of self-awareness as a learner. When we talk to people in the post-secondary world that work with students with disabilities or that just learn different in general, one of the biggest things that they see in terms of issues moving forward is that the students, when they come out to them in the post-secondary world, they don't know themselves. They don't know that, how they learn best, they don't know what they need, they don't know what's been provided to them, and so then they can't communicate that to other people that would be willing to help. This is a huge piece, obviously, like in the four-year college, the two-year school or the tech school feels this, but even businesses who are, who now, everybody is becoming more kind of aware of the benefit that having individuals with disabilities provide to their companies, but the people going to those companies, our students have to be able to express themselves to those post-secondary options. So we really look at increasing self-awareness as a learner, self-led IEPs. We've kind of steadily grown with those, and now we're at 100% of our IEPs are going to have a portion of it at least that's student-led, it depends on the student. The most typical one that you'll see though, involves a teacher really prepping with the student before the IEP. And there tends to be a ton of work at the freshman level, especially where this is maybe like the first time they're being let in behind the curtain, in terms of like, what is this document and what does it mean? So they work through them on strengths, weaknesses, accommodations they have, like, what do they think about all this stuff that we do with them? What do they see their needs being? And then when they go to the IEP meeting, they lead at least a portion of it. Our ones that are more independent will lead almost the whole thing, kind of sit there and help dictate kind of what it is that's going to go on with them. Other ones just talk about who they are, what they feel, and what they want as a learner. Some of our other ones, like our boys that are non-verbal autistic, what they'll do is, like Mrs. Finn, our speech and language pathologist, will work with them on using the iPad to state what it is they want to say, because they can't talk. And what that does is, one, it gets their real opinions, you know, on something, but then it also shows the parents, you know, functionally kind of like what we work on throughout the day. So there's a lot of benefits to the self-led IEP. The biggest one really occurs before we actually get to the IEP, where the student's talking about it to everyone. It's in them learning about who they are, what's been done with them in the past, and what do they want to see happen in the future? But then with that knowledge, they can go to their post-secondary destination and really advocate for themselves, and be able to talk openly and honestly about who they are and what they need to do the best work that they can. The second part of that, and it kind of goes in with letting the students behind the curtain, is their awareness of their own data. So you heard Donna talk about Edit just recently in past presentations. Edit is now warehousing all the data on our student IEP goals. It's a gradual rollout throughout the year, but what our, especially teachers are doing are putting all of their goal data into one central centralized location, which is in Edis. And so then on the student profile, we can click in and we can see what are the students' interventions that they've been given and what's the progress been in those interventions. And then when the student moves to North Campus or another case manager, that other person now has their whole history of their goals and they can see back to what it's been. Previously in special education, what happens is that you get the IEP and you see where they ended up. You don't get to see the whole progression, you know, the peaks and the valleys of what it was they, they did throughout the year. Because some of our kids, they have some, you know, at different times of the years will, will go down and they come back. So they can see that data readily and easily. And then there's not always just one person with a student who works with them. Some of our students have a case manager, they have speech and language, they have physical therapists, they have an occupational therapist, they have a school psychologist, counselor, all on through. And before, it would be like, "Hey, can you share that Google Doc with me?" Or where are they at on this? Now at one click, we can see all the goal data right there to know how are they doing in their, with their OT goals? How are they doing with their PT goals? In the future, Edis has the capability of being shared with parents so that parents can have logins to it as well. And we'll look to do that for the ease of communication back and forth so that parents will be able to click into a profile and see where, what the data is on their kid at, at any given moment. Right now, we don't want to do that because part of the painstaking process with this with both myself and staff is that we're going out and doing this, we're able to fix the bugs pretty quickly in real-time. Edis is a great company with that, but you know, like the other day, Dave Beckel's like, "Hey, I don't have this kid anymore. Where did he go?" So then I'm contacting Donna and Sue Gatto. We're like, "We can't find so-and-so in the system. We got to pull him back." And it's, it's everyone, you know, myself, our staff, Donna, Sue, learning about just how is Skyward interacting with Edis. And then so once we feel like we got a, a hold on that, we'll, we'll open that up or to parents being able to see what's in there. And then ACE activities, our staff, especially at North Campus, somewhat down here at South, but really our special ed teachers at North Campus are really invested in getting our students out into either interest areas they already have for their post-secondary life or ones that we think they might be interested in. They just don't know it yet. So there's always an eye on our students' report, just like they don't know what they want to do. Getting them out and taking them on tours of either four-year colleges, two-year colleges, or jobs they might be interested in. Our staff does a great job if we're going to take a field trip of, say, eight to nine students, making sure that we have a server, that we have coverage in different areas. But the, the turnaround that we get from the kids when we take them out, and the, and the big one is CTC and then the Trades Conference for our students because they just feel lost like they don't have a spot. And the people that talk to them at CTC or at the Trades Conferences say like, "You do have a place to come. We want you here, and you can be successful in these fields if you so choose and you want to put on the work." We also do a lot of trips down to the colleges, especially the four-year colleges. Heidi Hamilton heads that up, involved in work in the county, greater Milwaukee area with all the kind of directors of student services at the colleges, getting them out and getting them in front of the people that they're going to be associated with if they choose to go to a four-year college, talking about how to apply, what to talk about in your application process, what to do when you get on campus, how to decide if this campus is the right job for them. So they do with onboard of ACE, they've done a ton of work getting kids out and getting them to like see, integrate, feel, have job experiences in those realms. Growth and reading skills is always on our docket. Right now, the things that are new with us, we have a systematic intervention at North Campus for the first time. We've had them at South for quite some time where we have a teacher working with groups of students on specific skills. At North Campus previously, it was left up to the individual case manager to work with their individual caseload. The team up at North Campus, you know, thought, and I think rightly so, that if they had two teachers for two hours doing the work and really focusing and concentrating on it for that time, that they would do it with increased fidelity, and they would have more time to sit there and collaborate with one another about, is this working with this student? If not, how should we change it and what should we do next? So Scott Rice and Dave Beckel are running that class. They're able to address issues from basic reading skills and phonemic awareness to reading fluency to all different kinds of reading comprehension issues. And then tied into that, our utilization of a reading specialist, Carrie Feliboff, who's also an English teacher here, and a reading teacher, Laura Bowen, have been really good investments for us. We shuffle some money around in our federal grants to allow for greater work for both Carrie and Laura in their field. Bring Carrie on this year for really the first time, concentrating on how do our English classes and social studies classes, to start out, maybe a little bit of science as well? How does the reading that we're asking those students to do and how do they build reading comprehension in those classes? How does that interact with our struggling readers? And are we missing something in those classes? Are there different things that we can do, different strategies that we can try to help reach those readers as well as we seem to do with our readers that don't struggle? Along with that, she does intervene directly with some of our struggling reading students. Laura Bowen kind of meets us at the already identified at-risk level where she's working with students not in special education, but maybe at risk for being diagnosed with a learning disability or just a little bit lower in their reading. The other big part of Laura's job, and she's been absolutely tremendous with this, she's a wonderful self-starter. I think she thinks about this stuff all the time, if not too much, is she's really helped our special education case managers who are already doing interventions learn more about different interventions or help them troubleshoot if they feel like there's a problem or like they're not reaching a kid. So what will happen is that we'll have a special education teacher just saying like, "I don't like the, the way that the data is looking on this student. We're flatlining right now or we got a little bit of a downtrend going." Bring Laura in for a consultation, say like, "Here's what I'm doing with the student based on my data. This is why." Work through with Laura. And then Laura usually has three or four suggestions to try, to try for the student to get them back on track. So she's really been a tremendous resource with it. And being able to shuffle some monies around within our federal grant to allow for them to come on has, has been a big gift for us. The last piece, success in the inclusive setting. And what that means is just allowing all students that are within our Arrowhead borders to come to the great place that is Arrowhead and work with our teachers and their peers. So we want to keep them here. We want them to find success in our classrooms with our regular education population to the greatest extent possible. Part of this is working with really some efficiencies that we see that we can enhance. So we, our, our special education staff and our aides, they can't be in every single classroom helping a teacher and working with the students that are in there that have disabilities and, and that learn differently. So our, our staff is dedicated to, from school psychologists to our speech paths to our special education teachers, to going in and working with our staff in terms of how do you work with students with different disabilities? How do you work with this specific individual student? And then how do you structure a class so that you can help reach the students with disabilities? We've been focusing on this one for probably about the last year, and we just had our department meeting, and it seems like there's going to be a large focus for us over the summer with onboarding some more kind of just-in-time universal design for learning strategies for teachers as we see some of their numbers grow within their classes of students with IEPs. Part of the inclusive setting piece is the use of the BEST survey. So our students that are, are suffering from some symptoms of, of mental illness, our, our counselors and psychs deserve a lot of gratitude on this for deciding to take this on because it really was a lot of hard work on their part and a lot of work outside of the normal school day to do the rest of their work as we screened the entire student population. Then we brought in all the students that were elevated or very elevated according to the BEST screener to have a conversation with them about the results and then contacted the parents. So three steps really for those counselors and, and psychs to take. Laura reported out through the, the board report that twenty-five percent of the students that were elevated or very elevated, the, the parents didn't know that their students were feeling that way. The other seventy-five percent, there was a percentage of that that we already knew. So it was just kind of like, hey, this is a little bit of an update for you and it's a good conversation. But a large portion of that were families and students that had not notified the school that they were feeling this way. They were already in therapy, a lot of them. But what our counselors and psychs reported was that the relationship that they were able to establish from that conversation, kind of taking down that initial barrier of, you know, how do I approach this topic with, with people at school, was really beneficial. Nothing but the expression of gratitude from the parents who's, who we called for alerting them or just being able to have that conversation, letting those parents know that our counselors and psychs are a resource at school for their children and with the students in general so that they knew, hey, we have this relationship. You can come in here at any time. Like, let's, you know, let's keep up. Don't be afraid to come in and talk. Has been great anecdotally. Right after the survey and those screening calls, I was just up having a conversation with Paula Norwig at North Campus, just kind of, hey, how are things going this year? And she said, "The biggest thing I noticed is that we don't have as many students with anxiety in my office. They seem to be going to guidance." And it was funny because that came right off the heels of those comments from our guidance counselors and psychs saying that now there seems to be more of a relationship with these students, which is exactly the intended benefit that when they brought this forward that they wanted to do, so they thought that it would have, would be that they felt like they could get students in seeing them in more proactive manner just when things started to slip a little bit rather than when we were in full-on breakdown mode. So it, it's really been a great job by, you know, the psychs, the counselors, the tremendous parents of those, those students suffering symptoms of mental illness and the students themselves. It's, it's not easy to be open and honest and talk to people about that, but they're really doing a great job and, and we're anecdotally artisteating some of the benefits from that survey. The last but not least piece is our AODA focus. We obviously always have to have an eye on that. Hopefully one day, we don't need to have an eye on that, but things keep changing and they keep inviting new stuff for us to try to combat. Barb White really doing a tremendous job with the AODA focus. Recently, we brought on Your Choice Wakeup Call, which is a tremendous presentation. For those of you that haven't seen it, Your Choice puts out a bedroom and shows parents, and they have a great resource booklet. Here's what kids will try to hide. Here's what things look like. Here's where they try to hide it. And, and, and here's some tips that we found to help you navigate that field. And then one of the biggest things they say with your, with your students is like, they don't have the right to privacy in your home and in your, in your bedroom. So I was telling Greg, I got scared. I moved my daughter into another room, and there was like this little false door behind the cabinet. I'm like, "This is where she's going to hide." As she gets older, because I wanted your, your, Your Choice to Live. And then like when I opened it up, I saw a dead mouse skeleton in there, and I'm just like, "I'm leaving it in there." So when she opens it, she never thinks they go back in there again. And I'm like, "There are a couple more in there." But I mean, it is, I mean, even, you know, my daughter is like six and a half, and like when you go to a presentation like that, even with young kids, you know, I, I want to start to encourage our feeder schools to get out there because it's never too early to start thinking about that because at the age of thirteen, I know data says that like when they start dabbling, it's really the age of eleven. I mean, that's when it's time to like get on that and nip that in the bud. So that's one of the things. She's doing many other things. The, the Rosecrans program is still flowing, bringing in NAMI to work with our students and our health teachers. That work is never-ending. Deb, Becky, and Greg are a big piece of that as well as they're always, you know, the zombies in the war on vaping that they're, they're continuously trying to combat. So that's the probably longer-than-intended overview of the Student Services goals, but it, I mean, couldn't be more proud of the work that they're, that we're doing, and it really has been a great team effort. And the other thing that I will say is that last year, Becky and Deb joined our site counselor team every other week for meetings, and that's been awesome, having them serve with that group as well as it's helped us with our communication and idea formulation and really has helped expedite some of the work that, you know, it used to take a couple more years as we were just trying to get everyone on board. So that's, that's been a great addition for us. Done.
Once again, I get to, no, I'm going to time.
He's timing himself because he's.
Once again, I get to go last, so I bring up the rear.
You're the best for last.
And, and just so you know, when we talked about this, we agreed to keep them around three minutes each.
I can't talk that fast. I talk fast.
I think I could do mine in three minutes or less. Timing, there we go. So I've actually talked to you about our goals last, or two months ago when I came in September and gave you the kind of where we were and where we're going. So we kind of had that. But one of the things that's, that the responsibility of the principal is the school learning objective or the SLO. And not to be confused with the SLO, that is the, the student learning objective, which is kind of confusing because they're both called SLOs. One is the school, which we all do. One is the student, which is what the teacher works on. So last year, the last three years, we did check and connect. If you remember, we had teachers who were paired up with students and they monitored their performance and looked at where they're doing in classes, how they're doing in their homework, assessments, things of that nature, and kind of making, these are kids who are struggling, making sure. And, and now it's become, become part of the organization. We don't need to be monitoring. I think with the SLO, we're talking about how we're going to monitor something, what we're doing. And so not to be redundant, when we're doing the career, academic career experience anyway, we thought, "Let's just do that as our SLO." We have, this is what we have to do for the state. We have to, you know, keep, let them know some of the area that we're, we're monitoring. So, so the idea is, is that we're going to, all the stuff we're talking about, all those presentations that we're doing, but we're looking, we want to look at it from a four-year perspective. So we want to take a look at the freshmen right now, kind of get a baseline, and then see how they grow through four years. And at the end of four years, are they ready? And the things we talked about in there is that they've increased knowledge of not just careers, but how to get to those careers, and, and then careers that aren't available now, but maybe, and how to be prepared for those careers. You know, how can you take a general idea or a general area, knowing that that will help you in a career that maybe has never even been thought of yet, but you're, you've got the, the basic preparation to go do that. So have some knowledge, understanding of that. And then I think the next one on there, if you look at that, would be if you talk to a lot of our seniors and talk about their future plans, they can't do it. They don't have a, a sense of how to have that conversation. I had that conversation with my daughter, I had that conversation with the principal's cabinet kids. When you ask them, "What do you want to do or where do you ...?" And there, there's a lot of, "I don't know." "I just don't know." So at least we can get them thinking about where they have to go and what do they have to do, and be able to have a conversation with an adult, with a parent, with a teacher about where their future lies, where they want to go with it. So that's kind of what we want to do. We want to go over the next, we're going to be, again, monitoring and doing a lot of surveying at the end of the year, beginning of the year, but to see how they've grown from this, from this group of freshmen. We've been doing this now for four years. I asked my daughter today, I said, "When did, did we start doing this when you were a freshman?" She said, "Yeah, but it was just like, it was only like maybe three times or four times throughout the year, not every month like we're doing now." I said, "Okay, all right." So, so now that we've kind of got them down and we're doing what we're doing now, let's, now we, we have some successful programs we've put together, let's monitor it, follow those freshmen along all the way through to see where they're going. So that's where the, that's what the scoring objective will be for this year as well as for, for future years. So I'm three minutes and one second, okay? And I will also want to say, just to piggyback, one of the things that I told you about was that we would be, that we would be meeting with, trying to meet with all the freshmen. We have Joey Angelie back here, just so you know, and we met with Joey this last week, is that correct? And, and just tell you about Joey. Joey has his own DJ business, so if any of you want to have a dance, he's the one to talk to. So that is the end of the report, and that was three minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Any questions for any of our, for visitors? Well, they're not really visitors.
Donna, the total capacity for the internet here at Arrowhead, is it, is it sufficient? We've talked about that and whether, you know, I think we expanded it once.
Yes.
And how is it?
We do not exceed, probably the highest we get is during the basketball playoffs, and that, that's maybe, you know, seventy-five percent of our total capacity. So we're, we're still doing just fine. We're using, on, on average, we're using about fifty percent.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, just what you were talking about, Greg. Yeah, first, first I know, her, her daughter is a freshman this year. It's her first time being a Arrowhead parent. And she commented on the connections you're making with the, just the random connections with the kids where you, her daughter was one that you connected with. One, the mom was really intrigued by it, thought it was a great idea, but probably as important or more important, the daughter thought was, is pretty cool. So, good job.
Good. We, we really think that maybe one of the most important things we do because, like, I guess, when we see someone that says they're not doing anything, okay, they had one this week, not doing anything, boom. Deb brought him in as her, or this was a while ago, brought him in as the manager for the volleyball team, for her volleyball team. All right, say, "Okay, you're going to get on this club, you're going to get on that club." And we know, you talk about all the dangers out there and all the violence and things of that nature. Kids who feel connected are not going to engage in those kinds of things. It's those kids that feel isolated, not a part of it. And whatever we can do by getting to know us, getting to know them, that's what we say at the, at the end of each one, we say, you know, "We're going to know you, you're going to get to know us, you're going to know five other people in this room that you didn't know before."[1799.25] But, and then we also make sure that they're gonna be involved in something. It's, it's just been, it is the highlight of my day, I tell you, it's just awesome. And then we give them one assignment, we say, you have to, you have, the next time you see Ms. Perdowski, you have to say hi, Ms. Perdowski. In the hall, in the lunchroom, wherever, you have to say hi, Ms. Perdowski to her. You don't have to do it any other time, but that one time, and then she can do the same thing to me, you don't call her Ms. Perdowski, you call her. And, you know, and it's, it, I can tell you how accused. But I have to tell you, I also, I think I shared this with you, Becky. I do it sometimes by myself, because she's busy, but I share this with you. So, and you don't, and I try to describe her, now, how do you describe her? Big hair, you know, and kinda short, with a lot of hair all over the place. And I have a hard time describing her, so I went, I was at an event, and we have the volleyball girls who have these big pictures of themselves, you know, so I printed one up, and so I got this big picture of Deb's head, so I just pull it out, and she's not there, so they're gonna see who it is.
And make sure she loves that.
Oh, yeah. She doesn't know she's not there.
I bet she hears about it.
Yes, she has.
Any other questions?
I just had a question for Donna. When you were talking about the library and how you're encouraging kids to read more, which I think is a great thing, have you seen a downtrend, like, of kids not reading more, or?
I think with reading, but mainly with research, just because the research has transitioned so much online that our, you know, reference area is really unused. Nonfiction, either high-interest nonfiction is still, is still good stuff, but the nonfiction that's used for informative purposes alone, it's just, that's just not where they're getting their information from. So, that's the hard thing. We even pulled up crafting books, you know, kinda like make crafts for your family for, you know, the holidays, and they wanna watch YouTube videos, they don't wanna open up a book. And it's kind of, that's kind of the way, way it is now for that nonfiction piece. But we do still have kids who are regular readers. They love the series, you know, the kids in the book club, they ask for recommendations from my staff. So, that still is going on, which is...
Yeah, it's not my intention to put anybody on the spot, but, you know, the school report card just came out, relates to goals, I think. The closing gaps continues to be the most challenging area, it would appear to me. Can you review for us maybe how, what the recent history is of that? Are we gaining ground there, or, and if so, good, if not, why not, that kind of thing?
We, when the school report card first came out, and the closing gaps piece of it, we were, we reflect for every gaps in our graduation rates, math gap and reading gap. Right now, the reading gap is the big one that will persist for us. Looking back anecdotally, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of rhyme or reason for why on the ACT, which is the number that references, our numbers, you know, ends up low for that. We've had years where like we look at the class coming up, freshman aspire, sophomore aspire, looks fine, and then the kids, and it's a test that correlate with one another. The kids on ACT go down with our students with disabilities. There's been some theories batted around about why that might be. I don't know how much credence I give to any of them. One of the things that we looked at last year was, and this is what we're looking at with Carrie Felibom, is when we get a student into an intervention, they improve in the intervention, they do quite well. Their, their reading gets better, they get more proficient at reading. But why does our, or why do our students with disabilities seem to not latch on to the regular curriculum and progress at that regular rate as well as our students without disabilities? What is that about them? So, we still are searching for answers quite a bit. When you talk with the teachers at North Campus, who have a lot of these students that perform below on the test than we, than we think they should, it's not the ones that are going to four-year colleges. They, they perform consistent to where they've been and where we think that they're gonna perform. It's the ones that we think are going to tech schools or into the trades right away. So, one of the leading things is, it may be motivation for them. Dave Bechtel is hopeful, because they just got some recent news that like WCTC and trades are really starting to look at those ACT scores, because now they're everyone around the state in terms of placing them into programs, that that might help with motivation. But we're not relying on, like, maybe it's motivation, that's why we continue to have the focus within reading. But, you know, when I break it down kid by kid, you know, we have kids that, one, that don't test, we had two that didn't test, that would've performed very well for us last year. But then when the kid goes from, you know, a profession to a minimal on the day of the ACT, I have no idea why that is. I have no idea why they drop from basic to minimal on the day of the ACT. And then when you look at the splits on that, like their percentile ring, it's nowhere near where it should be. A little bit of that can be explained by, they look at an LEA number on it, which is English Language Arts and not a strict reading number. So, when you look at the ACT, the English Language Arts section, it's a lot of syntax. It's a lot of, this comma goes here, does this sentence make sense, yes or no? What's wrong with this sentence? Kinds of pieces, so sometimes it's not even directly related to reading. So, another question we have is, if we don't get this information from ACT, is it their reading? Or is it those sections that look at the comma placements? So, there's a lot to unpack in there. I'm not happy with it when I see it, but I also don't know what the, what the picture is painting for me. Which is why, you know, with the number being low, like you said, our staff is looking at like, what are some of the reasons outside of reading that it might be? How can we improve our reading internally? And then, you know, with the test pieces, it's not the typically like the role, so like, nobody has like a disability in grammar in special education. So, like, how much of it is that syntax piece? Which again, would look at the success of our students within the general like English curriculum, and is that something to concentrate on there, so?
I'd sure love to see a way forward there, you know, if there's a way to determine what the obstacles are that our kids are facing, we can help overcome them.
I think, I think as you look at the, at other data points, and this could be something that we've, when we have more time, maybe to talk through it, outside of the ACT, but other data points through if you start reading or achieve three thousand or other, other data points. It's ACT taken on one day. So, how did that student perform that one day? I don't know, what happened in their life that day? Could, could impact the results. So, remembering too that we're looking at other, other data points. So, what the state says in terms of whether we're closing the gap is a reflection, not over long-term, but more so what students did on one assessment.
So, are these kids just not good test takers, is that part of it, or?
I mean, you know...
I mean, those are all the questions that we go through, you know, and some of the, some of those points. We certainly don't teach specifically to the ACT test, there's correlates to the assessments that we do and some of the interventions that we do to it, but...
That gap has three different measurements, it's demand, it's the English reading, and the graduation gaps. Quite frankly, like, our graduation gaps went much, much better this year. It jumped up significantly, so we're way above the state average on the graduation piece. It's just that, it's just that, that student achievement piece. So, we're looking at a lot of different things. I think it also does factor into how well you're, how many, the higher percentage of your students that are special education, if you have special education kids. And we were looking at some of those schools today, and our number is, we've got forty-four kids who are in that group. Brookfield Central doesn't have that group, because they don't have, they have less than twenty students, so they can't, you can't measure. So, when you, so you look, because the significant number that we have is comparing to, we're not twice the size of Brookfield Central, we're about thirteen, fourteen hundred kids there, and we're, you know, like twenty-one hundred kids. But yet, we have more than twice as many special ed students as they have. So, I think that plays a factor to it as well.
There's some, to be quite frank, the one thing that like, I wish our state would become more responsible with is the data. Because like I said, we had two students, and like, it was kinda like a joke, like, you know, we were like, oh, they're gonna help us close our reading gap. They're, they have IAPs, so they are like in that pool of students, right? They would've, they scored like a thirty-five and a thirty-five on the ACT, those two students. They have IAPs. We haven't touched their reading.
But they did.
We, 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 we have nothing to do with their reading, because special education runs such like a wide gamut of students. Now, if a school has a student that is SLD reading, that is scoring proficient on the ACT, they're not doing their job, because that kid should not be in special education. So, like, there's, there's somewhat of data responsibility, and again, I don't wanna say that it's, that, you know, what it is or what it isn't, it could be a gap in how we identify, refer, and place students in IAPs, and it could be that our most severe students are in IAPs. And you're looking to, you know, if those two kids are in our numbers, our numbers are back up. But we did nothing with them for reading. Our best performers with disabilities, we do nothing with them for reading, because their stuff is more social or behavioral, right? We have a, we have a girl who scored very well, she, you know, her problem is anxiety and not being able to attend school and socialize. We don't, you know, she goes to English class, that's where she gets her reading from, and she scored great. So, we're supposed to pat ourselves on the back, you know, like, on earth, you know? It's like, you know, being, being, you know, realistic sometimes. Again, though, I don't wanna say it's this or it's that, we do address it, we do work with it, this department and that department, I mean, when we gotta look at the data, we went into it. It, you know, it is frustrating to go in there and look, every year, look at the students who moved in and try to figure out why. I don't have a pattern on it.
And remembering too that closing the gap is not just students with disabilities, but it's also economically disadvantaged. So, I think, you know, some, some of the things that we've talked about is the access to preparation for things like the ACT, making sure that we're, you know, providing that opportunity for free for students who have that need, access to the curriculum. I mean, that's, you know, that everybody has that, you know, equal access to, to learning experiences, you know, is something we also look at, because that plays a factor in closing the gap as well.
And just remember that those two young men who scored thirty-fives, their scores are included in here, because they didn't take it with their junior class, they took it separately, independently, and they opted out of taking it when we all took it, so their scores are not counted in this.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for us? All right. We went on a mini-report, sprinkle soup, you know, a whole list of stuff there.
Well, yeah. Great meeting. So, we'll start with a trip to Thailand. I wish everybody could've heard it. Just like the kids that went to Tanzania last year, this whole group wants to go to Thailand. And that's them.
First time they've been, ever been to Thailand?
Chris Harriet and Shayna Hekovich, Social Studies Department, looking to do service learning in Thailand using EF educational tours, and they're not staying in tents. Not staying in tents for this year. Tanzania was tense.
We did hear that.
They got great self-control.
Those accommodations were rough. But, yeah, similar, you know, a summer trip is what they're after, and, you know, again, these opportunities are all, you know, voluntary and paid for through parents or other fundraising opportunities that students have, so.
But it was really student-driven to, they were, to do this group, I mean, this is...
What's their mission, and what are they trying to accomplish?
They have, yeah, because they have a mission. Purpose trip is to provide, you know, it's just the opportunity to expand their global literacy and set up their immersion and, oop. The objective is to provide service learning opportunities. They have home construction for the elderly, on the, like it was doing the school last year.
This is what it is this year, but it was the students coming to Chris and Shayne saying, you gotta have another trip? You can't have the summer off?
Okay, I have to take a motion on that.
They don't want the summer off.
The teachers are right there, they want it.
Anybody wanna make a motion on approving that?
No more.
Make a motion of second, any questions on that? Hearing on all, favor state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
motion carries.
So, I'll let you talk more.
Okay, we have two course proposals coming from the Business and Marketing Department. And at the Curriculum Committee meeting, the entire Business and Marketing Department was there to support one another. Essentially, these are the first of a few course proposals that may be coming from this department in the next couple of years. The department has been really looking at student interest, academic and career goals, feedback from students regarding programs, for students who've really been concentrators in Business and Marketing. And the conclusion, so the first two proposals that you see here, one is Introduction to Business, the second is Business Connections. The feedback that our teachers have received is when previous to these, how we're currently operating, previous to these proposals, students come into the Business and Marketing Department and whammo, they're right on a pathway. So, they're taking dollars and cents, or they're doing business IT, or they're looking at maybe World of Business. But that World of Business is really kind of the, has a strong investment side to the curriculum. As they stood back and thought about the foundation that needs to be laid for students to identify globally what business is really all about, they felt like they needed an introduction to business here at South Campus. This class is being proposed to be offered both semesters, both ninth and tenth grade students. The focus for Introduction to Business provides students with hands-on opportunities to explore all the kind of realms of business, types of ownership, business communications, economics, business ethics, the government's role in business, business, finance, and marketing. So, it's kind of a, a survey, if you would, of what business is really about, so that as students do decide to move through the Business and Marketing Program, they've had exposure at least to all the components that make up what's involved in business. So, the idea is that that would be a new course, and it's considered the foundation of the program, not necessarily a prerequisite for every course that they could take, but the recommendation is that's where students start. The second class that's being proposed is Business Connections. This is replacing a course that's been on our, in our curriculum guide known as World of Business. World of Business is one of these classes that's sort of evolved over time, and the title no longer really matched, or didn't really represent what was happening in terms of the learning. So, this class is gonna be offered second semester to ninth and tenth grade students. The focus here is gonna be to provide students with extensive exploration to academic and career exploration. The way that the department explained it is, Introduction to Business is all like the business side, and the Business Connections is more the employee side. How, career exploration, how do I find a job, how do I interview for a position? How do I, how do I grow in my career? Giving them those really job search skills. So, really enhancing the academic career planning process out of that department. It has tremendous potential to do that, but understanding, as Greg was indicating before, the dynamic changes within the workforce. And so, being open to really understanding, for example, in the healthcare field or in other types of businesses, really what that means to make those businesses operate and function the way they do, it takes a lot of different career opportunities. So, Introduction to Business is sort of the business side of the house, Business Connections is kind of the employee side of the house. They feel like that together creates a really nice foundation for then students to take a look at the financial strand, the marketing strand, the business IT strand, as they, as they navigate through the depart, through what the department offers. When we look at student data about where our students want to go in their post-secondary plans, always within the top three career cluster areas is, is business-connected. So, it's, it's really driven by the trends that our students have interest in for post-secondary, and it's also driven by, I think, with an evolution of the way the program is unfolded, that these classes were really needed, they recognize they're really needed for foundation. So, what, what you're looking at are basically two introductory classes that they held at North, or rather, at South Campus.
But I think they're much more timely, they're much more what we need now. It was neat to see the whole team.
Yeah.
And they come together and be there at the meeting, and to say, this is where we need to go. I kinda feel like it went from there to twenty, you know, the...
Yeah.
This was a department that we weren't hearing from. I mean, we never talked about it in curriculum, and suddenly we have. I think we have a department back, it's good, it's really good.
There's, I mean, this, as our students move through the Business and Marketing opportunities, and like through the DECA, we've had DECA present to the board as well, we have some really strong capstone opportunities that a percentage of our students participate in. our students participate in. It's a sliver kind of of what business is about. Marketing's important, obviously, um, but, but they want to make sure that personal finance pays the business IT, which is really going to be next, um, in terms, you know, things like multimedia, computer essentials, desktop publishing, um, that those are being looked at.
I think things are defined much better in this whole chain.
Makes navigating through which course do I take now a little bit easier for students. And nobody's locked into any one given pathway. We do everything we can in terms of curriculum development, never to make, or course development and sequencing to say, "Well, now you're on this path and you can't get out." We want students to explore, we want kids to pop and, and look at different places. But for a student who's really passionate and driven in one particular area, it's very clearly laid out in terms of what they take for second.
But they're going to learn something, even if it isn't where they end up going.
Right.
They will learn something that will be part of life skills, skills.
Right. One, one more comment, but when our seniors took a survey for academic career exploration, one of the areas, I think I mentioned this in my under-year report to the board, where it made our eyebrows kind of go, whoa, when a, a, a large percentage of our graduating class last year indicated that they had not had enough exposure to job search, interview skills, resume development, the Business Department's reacting to that with this, with these introductory, with, with Business Connections, so.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the first one, the Introduction to Business course proposal. I'll be a doubtless. Second. Motion of second. Any questions on that one? Hearing not all, in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the Business Connections course proposal.
I'd also need you to approve that.
No, second, yeah, as well.
Motion of the second. Any questions on that one? Hearing not all, in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one. I'm doing this, my most enthusiastic Anthony Christian, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna channel him right now.
But I just want to say, we had...
It can be tough to beat.
Yeah, well, I can't do it. It's already a failure.
We have the latest presentation, and I asked that he be here tonight, he couldn't. You will do a great job, Sue, but I hope everybody had a chance to read this. I just, what we sat and listened to, what our kids have the opportunity to be a part of in this school never ceases to amaze me, and this is capstone, high-end, mountaintop, I don't care what you call it, it is unbelievable.
Go for it, Sue. Okay. So a few years back, when, even when the conversations were taking place after the Business Steering Committees had been pulling together information about the direction of technology and, and engineering here at Arrowhead, so going back two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, somewhere in there. This vision for Warhawk Manufacturing emerged. We had, we had work we had to do at South Campus, we needed to build our, um, our program here, and then that capstone vision continued to be kind of out there, worked on slowly. The vision for Warhawk Manufacturing is very unique in terms of a, of a course. So the opportunity as a capstone at North Campus for seniors is essentially running a manufacturing shop here at Arrowhead. Complementing, uh, not necessarily replacing, but complementing what students have the opportunity to do in the tech ed practicum, students have the opportunity in-house to gain real-world experiences running a shop. From everything, from product development, um, to product manufacturing, uh, to building your teams, designing the products, marketing products, sales of those products, um, it's an entirely student-run business. It is, sounds very grandiose, and it is, and, um, and I'm excited. We've used Cardinal Manufacturing out of Oliva Strum, Wisconsin, as our model. Anthony and Paul Brester was a big part out of the Business Department, too, reviewing of what had occurred there, and then out of Mozzany, Wisconsin, was a day also. There are only, um, a dozen or a little bit more student-run businesses like this in the state of Wisconsin. So although it's not a first of its kind, it is an opportunity for students to be a part of a business, customers, product development, um, all, all being run, all being student-led, and the teachers are really facilitators. I think a key component of Warhawk Manufacturing will be to bring in those business mentors. How do you write a business plan? How do you, um, how do you take a look at the data in terms of like consumer data about where there's demand for certain products? That's out there in, in terms of a, a, a vision for, for a course like this. It may run and start very small, similar to some of the things that they're doing right now. Um, right now, our metals and woods, um, advanced metals and woods classes always sell like tables, homework tables, or coffee tables. They may, they may have to start with some things like that, but ultimately, the hope is students have a vision within some fences about something they think would be interesting to sell or make, and they're going to, they're going to have the opportunity within the year to do that. There is potential for, um, a small, tiny stipend for students or scholarship opportunity with a little, if they make a profit, profit sharing, um, but they're going to interview for all of their positions, um, and they're, again, so from start to finish, they're, they're, it's simulated, but also kind of real-world opportunity. Two years ago, Paul Brester and some of the business ed, Business and Marketing teachers that I went to see, um, interact, which is a, um, a, a student-run business out of Pewaki School District in the CISA One Building, and the big takeaway that we had there was the importance of really having those real authentic opportunities for, um, for development and sale of those products and building upon what business mentors can help students do. So bringing in those business partnerships is going to be a central part of the building of this particular program. Starting small, we're not doing anything out of aviation or automotive, uh, so product liability, we're going to be very low-risk items, we're not doing anything where we're going to be in trouble or, or sued or something like that. So, but there's potential here for, for a lot of really cool, creative design, um, or for students to really create and design, uh, products that have, that have real value. They're doing some of that already. This is not the first student-run business, of course, that we have at Arrowhead High School, we have the coffee shop, we have Cafe Arrowhead, um, so we have some good models in place for this, but out of the manufacturing area, it's going to be a unique opportunity. So, um, the vision is laid there, we want to start by piloting something next year on a smaller scale, and then we may have to come back with a, a tweak or a revision uh, next year based on what, um, after we were able to do this for a year if we, if it is approved. So that's kind of the gist, I think. Did I answer? Any questions I can answer?
Is the, is the vision of this, is like maybe every year, whatever they produce is going to be different than the previous year?
Potentially, because the students are going to have, you know, have the opportunity to kind of decide what it is they want to be working on, but they're also going to have customer, hopefully, regular customers. So it may be, as they begin, that, um, you know, Schober Tool, Schober wants something, a small part, uh, perhaps made in our shop, and we become, that, that becomes an order that they put in, and we make it.
Now, the second question I have is, do we have the, I'm sure we do with limitations, do we have the physical plant to do this?
North, the, um, addition of that classroom at North Campus that the board approved last spring and is, was completed October first, was huge. There was no way, I feel, if I can speak for Anthony, that we were going to bring business partners into that old shop. It would have kind of been embarrassing. But now we have an opportunity for students to meet with potential customers, businesses, a real classroom environment, that bright manufacturing area that we now have with just a coat of paint, some new lights, now creates an opportunity by which we, we would bring customers into that space. Um, in terms of equipment, we, we continue donations and, and grant dollars, continue to update our equipment, and we're slowly but surely getting there. Um, so we are, we feel like we're equipped. There'll be some limitations based on equipment, um, I'm sure, but we'll, you know, I think that Anthony's willing to work through those challenges.
Is some of the equipment at South Campus?
Yeah.
Be able to use?
Yep. Yeah, for sure.
And Anthony has really worked closely with a couple of these districts that have, so he's seen the bumps, the downfalls, the upfalls.
And recognizing too, not every student-run business like this can, can work the same here as it, you know, as it would somewhere else. In an Oliva Strum or a Mozzany, and the, um, the way that community is built, or the way their businesses are built around, um, in, in those communities to support the high school, it, it, it's going to look a little bit different, um, for us here.
They don't have Anthony's.
They don't have Anthony.
They don't have Anthony.
They don't have Anthony.
They don't have a man on fire.
Um, yeah, he, he's, he could be cloned, and I don't think we have enough of him. But, um, I just, I think the, I think the potential is really there. I think we, we're going to need to take a year or two, it's going to build slowly. I think we know that. Um, yeah. Is where Cardinal, um, Cardinal Manufacturing and Oliva Strum or some of these other outfits that, you know, again, they, they said, "Give yourself that three-to-five-year process to really, to really build," because there's going to be bumps and things you haven't thought of, and, um, but I think the big piece is Steve was really helpful with all the liability pieces, because we wanted to make sure that we were, that we were covering ourselves there. Those were, those were some big, uh, big questions in terms of, is our school going to be treated sort of like employees? So we had to kind of make sure we had our, um, our Ts crossed and our Is dotted in terms of what that meant, you know, child labor laws.
We learn more from our failures sometimes than our successes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think if we look at this, our kids would be having experience, one way or another, whatever they're able to get out of that will change them.
Yeah, so I think marketing and promoting and helping students realize the unique nature of what they get to be a part of, and, and, and really totally student-driven, I think is, yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be neat to unfold, you know, to see how it unfolds, but.
Make sure you trademark everything you produce.
I am. We'd rather become patent attorneys, we're going to know all about it.
I will, we approve the Warhawk Manufacturing course proposal. A second, a second.
It's, it's a great opportunity, yeah, so we're excited.
All right, so we have a motion of second. Any other questions on that one? Hearing not all, in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kent, you have a question?
No.
I was wondering if you made the motion.
Oh. Right, motion passes.
Once again.
Hold on.
I mean, curriculum is the best. We didn't cry at this, but we were so excited, and Anthony talked so fast, that we all probably worked twice as fast the whole day, but, um, feel free to come to our means, because they are so cool.
All right. Finishing the legislation.
Go for it. Date to be determined. I feel very unfortunate right now. Date to be determined. Uh, we just discussed before the meeting that probably Tuesday, December fourth would be a good day for our next finance and legislation meeting, at seven AM. That's my statement.
All right, going in grounds.
Fred, going in grounds, we had, uh, a number of things we talked about. First one was, um, the crosswalks at North Campus. As you are well aware, we had two students injured, uh, struck by another student several weeks ago. So they've been looking at the signage, the crosswalks. Currently, the signs we have up there are indicating, uh, walkways are really more for pedestrian signs, they are not for school crossing signs per se. They're also, uh, not placed where it is most beneficial to recognize, "Hey, you've got a crosswalk here." So we're going to add signage, we're going to have signs that will actually point right at the crosswalk, so as though, hey, this is where the, where the crosswalk is. We've got a lighted sign on the west side coming, you know, along the camp, um, between the, um, football stadium and North Campus, which is lighted, we're going to, uh, we're going to be moving that. We're also going to be looking at, um, putting some, what do you call those in the middle of the road?
Paddles.
Paddles in the middle of the road like we have down here where it does pedestrian crossing, student crossing, that kind of stuff in the middle of the road. So we're doing quite a bit to help, um, make that much more apparent. Merton is, Town of Merton is really on board with this, they were, uh, more than willing to pay for everything except I think the lighted sign. So they're going to be putting that up hopefully this year yet, which will make it much safer and more apparent of where the crosswalks are. School Safety Grant follow-up, you know, the first grant, we got a whopping about twenty thousand dollars, I believe it was. Uh, the second grant, the second round, we got about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we're looking at finishing up the door access and the cameras to the doors, uh, some of that money. And then the big one, which there isn't enough money for, but the big one is rekeying all the locks in the doors and, um, each of the doors and making them so that they can be locked from the inside of the classroom. Currently, many of those, you have, the teacher has to go out, get a key, lock it from the outside, come back into the, into the classroom, uh, which obviously if there's something going on up there exposes that teacher to, uh, anything that might be going out of the hallway. So we're looking at that, um, about five hundred and five doors, and I don't think that's all of them, I think there were some that weren't actually included in that count. Uh, there's a myriad of different door manufacturers and different layouts, so it's going to take some, quite a bit of effort to get these, um, all configured and finding the right pieces that we can do without actually having to replace everything with them. We also have, currently, we have issues as far as, uh, key security. So right now, we don't necessarily know exactly who's got all the keys. Keys have been handed over the years, that kind of stuff. So inventory is, you know, kind of an issue with that. So that, we're looking at, uh, program to track key. USC will also have, um, well, just, just different types of getting into the, in the buildings, there'll be common keys, teachers will be able to get into their sections of the building without having separate keys for each classroom, that type of, like, kind of, many master keys.
Maybe do some fobs in some parts of the building, not, not all the classroom doors. Because then you can change things without, you know, make the key.
No, actually have a key on, they'll have a key on their, on their lanyard so that they'll have access to the key immediately, so they don't have to go hunting for a key. Building envelope capital improvement plan, Kevin, uh, presented us with a budget plan all the way up to two thousand forty-four, so.
Oop.
Not sure how after it is, I don't quite that far, but, uh, he's got it. Quite a bit of money being expended in the next several years, next year's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly in building, roofing and that kind of stuff. The following year, uh, twenty twenty-one is almost triple that, about one point eight, one point nine million dollars. So we've got some pretty big expenses as far as building, uh, needs, as far as roofing and air conditioning units and heating units and that kind of stuff coming up in the, in the not-too-distant future, so, um, how we're going to do some of that, we're not quite sure yet, but, um, quite a bit, quite a bit on the plate there as far as, um, needs. About that?
Your next meeting is December fifth?
Yes, December fifth, seven AM. We're not quite as exciting as curriculum, but...
Nothing is.
Everybody's loving it.
Hey, something to do with the spokesperson.
Yeah, babe.
You can cry just a little bit.
Yeah, this meeting was all about Anthony, he was great.
We cried then.
You're going to cry over those leaving.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, moving on to personnel, uh, we met yesterday, actually. The first thing we talked about was a follow-up discussion, if you recall, from, uh, last spring, we brought this up, this was a, uh, a request after we had negotiated with the teaching staff, uh, for some consideration of a potential increase or additional pay boost for the top E tiered teachers. And we told them that time we, we had to wait until the fall to know what our finances were going to be to the state and things like that, to certify the levy and all that kind of stuff. Keep it in mind that we did give a reasonable pay increase this year anyways, but we said we would readdress it in the fall. We met in October, talked a little bit more about it, and asked Steve to come up with some costing as to what that would be. Plus, at the October meeting, we, we also discussed that if we were going to make a recommendation to the board, it was going to be an increase for everybody here, not just that group of employees. And, uh, so we met again yesterday because we wanted to make sure if we were going to make a recommendation, we had enough time that it was going to be implemented potentially at the first of, of next year. So this would give Steve and his staff enough time. So Steve did cost it out, it was approximately about forty-five thousand dollars to basically move everybody from a one point five to a two point one percent, uh, increase. And, uh, after a lot of discussion, uh, we are not making a recommendation to do that. We have concerns about, uh, not knowing what the change in governor will do, not knowing what our, uh, we're coming into a new state budget year next year, we don't know what that is going to be, and so we're not, we're not comfortable making a recommendation to move on. And as I previously said, we already gave, uh, a reasonable increase for everybody this year already anyways, so we're not making a recommendation to do anything more. The next thing we talked about was some initial discussion about potential communication, public information coordinator position for the school. This has come up, uh, board members have brought it up before, staff members have brought it up, Laura before as well, and, uh, Laura had provided some information from different And Laura had provided some information from different districts, what the, what these positions are, what they do, those types of things. And the consensus, I think the consensus of the group is that it would be a very positive thing for Arrowhead. It just goes back to financially, we're not in a position, certainly not in a position to fund a full-time position at this point for a person like that. But we did have some discussion about potentially looking at a contracted type of effort. So Laura, Laura's gonna do some more research on that. She's gonna contact, she's gonna reach out to and talk about it with, whether it's as a regular person that we use, do we use it at a certain time, those types of things. And, you know, we all think, everybody I think feels the position is needed to some extent, and, but again, this comes down to, if we're gonna fund something like this, something's gonna probably have to be cut to do it. We're not willing to cut into our educational process to do that, so anyways, that's a lie I reported on. Future meeting to be determined. Policy.
No report, but I will have one next time we meet.
Yes, you will. All right.
It'll be spectacular.
Oh, yeah. It has to be now.
It'll probably be better than soon.
No.
All right, moving on. Other reports, under the WASB, a couple of things you've probably been getting inundated with emails and mailings for the conference in January, so, you know, that's coming out. Donna and I attended a regional meeting last month in Milwaukee, and nothing really came, there was nothing really shattered that came out, other than what we normally can cover. Again, because that was before the election, so everybody, I mean, nobody really knew what was gonna transpire. We still don't know, even with the change of, at that level, so we'll see what happens there. Prior to that, I did attend the meeting that was, or the training that was provided. Bob Butler did a presentation on conducting school board meetings and stuff like that, and I wanted to just listen in, engage how we were doing based on what he presented and things like that. I learned all sorts of tricks, but I did come away that we're doing, we're doing pretty good, so I'm not worried about anything there. Bob always does such a great job of that, so that's it for that. See you soon.
No see you soon.
All right, new business, employee transactions. We have a number of resignations here. There's three of them.
Did we accept the resignations?
Certainly.
Give a motion, a second, to approve those or accept those resignations. Any questions on those?
Laura or Greg, do you have any concerns about losing some of these folks?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about them, or how difficult it will be to find their replacements and stuff?
Well, we always work hard to find great replacements. Sometimes the time of year, it's not a typical time to be searching for positions in education. That usually happens in summer, so that can add an extra challenge. People may not be comfortable leaving current positions. On the other hand, the same people may not be looking for five different jobs, you know, if we find the right person. One of the positions, Carrie Trittabow, our HR coordinator is her current title, she is, she's not happy about leaving. She's, it's a family circumstance that she's resigning, and they're actually gonna move to Illinois. We met, Steve and I met today with the district office staff for well over an hour, hour and a half, to talk about the position, how's it been going, what could improve about that role. Anytime there's a new position or someone resigns, we look at it as, let's review, does the position work? Let's review the job description, is it adequate? And there needs to be some changes in that, that job description and even the length of the day, so we're going to work to improve that position. So, now while we're always sad to see people leave in most cases, it also is a chance to review what's been working and how can the role change? Who do we target for positions? So we're confident we'll be in good shape.
So these were, at least one, eventually was, your spouse was willing to move out of state, what I understand?
It's a move to help family members in a different state.
I'm not trying to be personal, I'm just wondering if, if, what the factors are that are causing this.
Right, and two of the folks resigning are aides, teachers' aides, and one of them was hired and then also due to some family circumstances, never really even worked a day. Had to be out for reasons, and it just wasn't going to work with her schedule. And another person worked with us for a little while, and then there was a different job opportunity that I can't remember if it was, I think the difference was it was full-time and venomous.
We're fine on that one.
Okay. I just don't know, I wanna kind of get a sense of her being outcompeted, you know, in the marketplace.
With aides, sometimes it's the economy. Just the economy's good. We talked about this in Bucks Shirey Special Ed Directors last Friday, that with the economy being good, Greg's talked about this too, is that sometimes there are higher paying jobs out there. We're pretty confident with the needs that we're able to replace. I think that the one that we're replacing is gonna be a pretty big upgrade, and they're coming to us from Milwaukee Shaw, so we're competitive. We compared aide price ranges. One district is very high, probably not higher than that. Everyone else is pretty, pretty, pretty similar in terms of like what they're, what they're paying out, and we're pretty good at recruiting reputation of people that work within the school, so.
All right, motion in a second on those, on the resignations, all in favor, state aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a number of contracts to approve. If there's more to be added.
I will be approved of contract tracks as, for that?
Seconds.
Motion, a second, any questions? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion, action on the 2019-2020 school calendar, and Laura had presented once before on that. Any additional stuff?
I, no, there was nothing changed since you last reviewed it. I put it out to our staff for input and feedback, and there was, there weren't concerns expressed. So it seems pretty run-of-the-mill. If the board should approve it tonight, I will get it out to staff members and families via email either tomorrow or Friday, so before the end of the week, we'll get it posted on the website. Even though, I mean, we're talking 19, 2019, 2020, it's a long way off. People start calling and asking, are we still having this weekend off or these days off? But it's nice.
That they do, because they wanna plan for it, not missing schools, so that's a positive.
Absolutely. We appreciate that, and that's why we move on the calendar early. I'll also comment that our seven K eight feeder schools, they're different districts, so they will have different calendars, and they have different school boards to approve their calendars, but we do work in conjunction to try to make them as common as possible. It doesn't always work perfectly. Each district has a different teacher contract, different number of professional development days, but in general, our calendars will be very similar for this school year.
Okay. I retain a motion to approve the calendar.
Aye.
Motion, a second, any questions? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and action on transferring funds from the defunct chess club activity account to the esports club activity account.
So if I've earned some odd balance, are we making that a second?
Have a motion and a second. Can, can you just explain what's the esports club?
Can you explain that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a gaming club. It started a couple of years ago, and at least a couple of years ago, I'm not positive that this year it's running the same time, but it was five o'clock on Friday, and I think it's just fabulous that teachers are willing to start a club at five o'clock on Fridays. I'd hop in every now and then, and the room was full, 25 or 30 students. They're all over, and they're, they're video gaming. But it's, it's, it's called esports, because there's strategy involved, they're competing against others online, and then the club can actually compete in esports with other schools.
As a group? I mean.
As a group, they're earning points.
Yeah, okay. So they're not only working against each other, they're all together.
Yeah, and I learned recently, just from one of the fellow board members, that you can get college scholarships in esports, so it is.
It's definitely a thing.
Do they tie to each other?
Or is it a silent room?
They tie, if they have their headphones on and a microphone in front of their mouth.
We talked about that when the club was created, too. It was a lot of our students that didn't have a lot of social interaction, like Greg talked about, like the importance of getting people connected in the school. These are kids that were not involved in clubs, not tied to, some of the kids you never saw socialize. And now what Mike Dolly, who started their club, and now new teacher Andy Still has done, you know, you get 30 of those kids in a room, and now there's social interactions. You know, the students are working with one another back and forth as well, too. So it's, it's taking students out of the basement, you know, instead of like going home on a Friday, sitting in your basement, put them the headset on. They're with like their friends, you know, they're ordering pizza, they're, they're having a great time, and they're, and they're doing, you know, pretty well, and I think that we usually do pretty well, so.
Right.
It, it, it's really a great club to help boost student involvement for those that might not otherwise be involved.
That being a strong point of mine, is it all guys?
No.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, what do you think the percentage?
Eighty percent boys.
Okay, so, okay, but so you get.
But there's, you know, there's a handful of girls.
Yeah, I just was being nosy and asking, because I have, wouldn't see me knowing what to do.
Probably kids is part of the group.
Any classroom that's about 30, they're pretty stocked.
Well, they actually, they're, or sometimes they go over to the, you know, over to the next room, and that's where they're getting their pizzas over the other room, and then, you know, there'll be a group of kids, you know, watching, because someone's really doing well, and so there's like seven guys standing around watching this.
You know, but how cool, they're still in school.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's awesome. On a Friday, I mean, I think it's cool.
How long to these dates? That could be hours.
I know, two Saturdays ago, they were here, because they were doing a tournament, fundraiser tournament, but they were here from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon.
Some of us have been here for all-nighters in the past, though.
Where was this club five years ago?
It was, I think it was about one year away from being here.
Ooh, well. Everything's everything.
It is cool.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, to approve that transfer, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have one question, probably goes more back to the curriculum. This, this year we started the officiating class.
Yes.
How's that going?
It's going really well. In fact, that was one of the parts I cut out of mine, because Greg was breathing down my neck. Part of the, you know, yeah, we have multiple sections. One of, some unique kind of stories that I, that Jeff Staus has shared with me is, it's not just sport-oriented students that are taking the course. So it really, there was a, a student in particular that a lot of us know, who was, they're into sports, they don't play sports, right? They probably watch a lot of sports. But part of your assessment is you've gotta take a sport, you've gotta both coach it and officiate it, and you have to do it in front of the class and get critiqued. And this particular student isn't really used to that, or used to the criticism, you know, that sometimes peer, you know, peer-to-peer kind of, kind of critiques. But Jeff just said, just watching the interaction between the students, give specific criteria information to that other particular student about what they did well, and what they might need to work on, and how they communicated this, and were they clear in their directions? Did they feel, you know, valued as part of the coaching experience? That, you know, even if you don't go on, ever do coaching, ever doing officiating, getting out in front of your peers and being open to that critique is really cool. So we're really excited to see how grows.
I mean, that's life skills.
Yeah.
Is part of, is part of the course, do they, do they talk or teach them about how to deal with angry people, angry coaches, angry parents?
Um.
Not taking it personal.
I think you want to sign up for the.
He's an anxious parent, the yell at you, I could come in.
I think they work off a set of sort of criteria pillars by which, I mean, really keeping the focus on the player and its kids, keeping the focus on the students. I mean, there's some, I want to say some foundational pieces there, that not necessarily directly, like this is how you handle an angry parent, but how you always channel, you know, channel work into the kids that you work with, so, which is, you always have to remember.
Great skills.
Yeah, good stuff.
That they'll use.
Yeah, we'll have that group after we get our feet on the ground, probably report out to the board.
Oh, and come in, like, officiate us?
If I could, my son's taking that class, he loves it.
Oh, good. Yeah.
He's got an A.
Hey, I'm taking A, yeah. No, it's, what's funny is Jeff is teaching it in a world language classroom, which just makes it even more, we, we just got crunched in classrooms and, and we just needed a classroom close enough to, to the facility, the gym facility when they needed it, but, so anyway, when I go in there, I'm kind of like, this is weird, but.
We've all.
Find a new room for them.
Gotta love curriculum.
Yeah. Good stuff.
All right.
Moving on.
I'll take it.
Discussion and action accepts the donation, no to include in the package. I, I have a question, is this, is this the Brad Corporation of students, or is this a different Brad group?
It's the Mollets.
Yeah.
So moving.
Yeah, second. Let's get this.
We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Yeah, well, just dropped out of the sky, or is this related to a particular?
He popped in for, Brian popped in on a Monday for a visit, and by Monday afternoon, there were emails flying, he donated 10 grand. And he was here, he was coming for that business lunch that our tech ed teachers ran Friday afternoon, so he was here to talk with the teachers, kind of prep about that, how could he, as a business leader and one of our business partners, support the teachers in that lunch presentation? And Brian Mollet is a supportive supporter.
Thank you, thank you. We need to go make a thank you presentation.
Yeah.
We do that a lot.
Okay, good.
You'd be there every week.
Yeah, I know, it's awesome.
There are worse things.
It's awesome.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any future agendas? Were we adjourned? Just happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a great holiday with your families.
One future agenda thing?
Yes.
Next month, we will have the school board approve our school safety plan. Because there's things in that plan that are of a confidential safety nature, we need to have a closed board meeting to actually review the plan, and then we'll approve it in open session. So I just want to comment, or talk about that. My thought was, we would meet at 6:00 in closed session, and that would take no more than 40 minutes. So we would close out that closed session by 6:40, so Bob can set up for videotaping the 7:00 PM meeting, and then go roll into our regular schedule, our regular board meetings. Does that?
That works.
Is that what it works?
Yes.
We can probably figure out.
I was thinking that.
All right, Steve.
See, I'm coming for.
Since you're vegan, I was coming here.
That's right. I mean, when we did it before, we got food.
That's right.
It's always nice to, and it's Christmas, then, you know.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Wear a hat.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion, a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Bob.